I wasn't, I'm not.
Right now, when we landed, I heard the guy blood on that shirt.
You could be working about in Southwest. Oh, God. You could be sitting in Baltimore right now.
So that day is different.
It's okay. Bella?
Here.
Payleiner?
Here.
Bongard?
Here.
Bancroft?
Here.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Here.
Werble?
Here.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Here.
Tonight's implication will be given by Rita Payleiner.
Tonight, as we look to adopt next year's budget, we give thanks for our predecessors and for current staff who have participated in difficult decisions that have balanced fiscal responsibility with meeting our community needs. We seek wisdom for continued discernment in economic decisions to not only work for today, but also prepare for the future as we best know it. Amen.
Rita, would you also please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its representative republic, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I believe the Kiwanis members would all like to come up and stand. That's the word on the street, I believe, so... As the group comes up, I can begin. We have a proclamation tonight for the St. Charles Kiwanis Club, celebration of 75 years, so congratulations. Okay. So the proclamation states, "Whereas the mission of all Kiwanis organizations is to serve children and the community, and whereas the first Kiwanis club in St. Charles was founded on May 17, 1923, but disbanded on February 22, 1941 during the early years of World War II, and whereas the current St. Charles Kiwanis Club was chartered on March 19, 1964 and continues to serve to this day, and whereas the Golden K Club was chartered on April 26, 2002 and continues to serve to this day, and whereas the St. Charles East and the St. Charles North Key Clubs, Builders Clubs, and Action Clubs provide young people the opportunity to serve others and to learn how to lead in our community, and whereas the St. Charles Kiwanis Club has partnered with the St. Charles Park District to provide ADA-approved individual and wheelchair swings in our community's park, and whereas the St. Charles Kiwanis Club, in conjunction with the Fox Valley Special Recreation Association, has sponsored a day in the park for over 1,000 summer camp participants, and whereas the St. Charles Kiwanis Club, over time, has partnered with over 90 organizations with grant funding to meet children's needs and participated in 13 activities that enhance our community, and whereas collectively our Kiwanis clubs or Kiwanis organizations have made a difference in the lives of the children and community of St. Charles for over 75 years. Now, therefore, I, Laura Vitek, Mayor of the City of St. Charles, and on behalf of the St. Charles City Council, offer sincere appreciation for the leadership and generosity of the hundreds of Kiwanian volunteers and celebrate their 75 years of service in St. Charles. So with that, tonight, the municipal building will be lit up in blue until April 11 in honor of your 75 years. So Susan, thank you for bringing your group here today, and I welcome you to the podium here.
Thank you, Mayor Vitek and members of the city council for honoring the Kiwanis organizations that have served the city of St. Charles for over 75 years. It includes our current club, the St. Charles Kiwanis Club, the Golden K, and hundreds of kids that are in our key clubs at St. Charles North and St. Charles East. Tonight is the kickoff of our celebration. It's not just our club, it's past members, past clubs. We are celebrating our service and we are celebrating our community, and we thank you for this honor and this proclamation. I would like to present Mayor Vitek and the city of St. Charles with this special plaque honoring the city of St. Charles for their support, and we really appreciate the partnership that we've had with the city over time. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think it's kind of funny because someone up on the dais said it's like royalty back here. There's so many of you have been involved in so many different organizations, so I think that's a testament of your group, too, is that not only you do what you do for your group, but in other groups throughout the community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Rita, you can...
Read a picture. Oh, oh, yeah.
Hey, now I invite Jenna Swicki up to the podium. Jenna is here for the presentation of the St. Patrick's Day Parade winners from the St. Charles business line.
Hello, everyone. I'm here today to talk about a wrap-up from our 2022 St. Patrick's Day Parade event. So just to give you a little bit of background about the event, it was on March 12th of this year. Can you hear me? Okay. We had an opening ceremony for our first time, which included Irish step dancers, roaming bagpipers. We had over 80 entries in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. We had a lucky photo station. We partnered with the Park District for Shamrockin' along the Fox River 8K, and 30 different businesses had different sales and specials throughout the downtown in honor of the event. And we had over 15,000 people brave the cold and come out for the parade. We couldn't do this event without our sponsors. I wanted to take a minute to thank them, including St. Charles Chrysler Jobs in Deep and Ram, who is with us tonight and will be helping us present the awards. One of the most important things we do, and the whole reason we do all these events, is to help our businesses and to drive traffic into St. Charles. So I have some feedback here from some of our businesses. I'll just pull up the top one here from the office. It says, "It's a great sales boost every year and showcase the restaurant to new customers." We also got some feedback from the community, which is always fun to hear from. And so one of the feedback we got from them was, "Great job to all the volunteers, coordinators, and participants. The parade was a lot of fun. It was well organized as well. Thanks so much. It was nice to have St. Patrick's Day Parade back. It was a happy event for everyone in attendance. Well done." Here's some of the marketing highlights that we did for the event, including rap cards and posters. And then we also did coasters that we provided to all of our entertainment districts in the downtown area. And those went over really well this year. And so we're going to get into why we're all here, why a lot of you are here. So we're going to give out the awards for the parade. When I call your names, please come up and stand here. You'll get your picture taken with our good advertising sponsors and Mayor Vitek. And so you'll just come here and stand here, and then we'll get a picture taken for everybody. All right. We're going to start with the business category. In third place, we have Bill Cho's United Taekwondo Center of St. Charles. Congrats.
Thank you.
All right. Second place in the business category was the Arcata Theater. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And in first place, we have the Harry Ant Incorporated Screen Print. Come on up. All right. Next up is the nonprofit category. We have American Legion Post 342. In second place of our nonprofit category, we have the Knights of the Covid. And in first place, we have Tiny and Tall Rescue. All right. We'll get into our third place for children's category, Girl Scouts of Northern Illinois. In second place in the children's category is Chicago Soccer Academy of the Fox Valley. And in first place, we have Strikers Fox Valley Soccer Club. All right. And last, but certainly not least, we have our best-in-show, which is Lazar's House for this year. Congratulations. Congratulations to all the winners, and we will see you all in 2023. Thank you.
Hey, we have one more presentation this evening. I welcome Lauren Nagy from the Natural Resources Commission up to the podium. He's the chair, and he will be giving us an educational presentation this evening.
Okay. Natural Resources Commission, we have 11 commissioners and four student commissioners. The 11 commissioners are appointed by the mayor, and the student commissioners we get from the high schools, can be at college as well, but those are selected by the commission. We meet the second Thursday of every month in the Public Works Building over on Seventh Avenue. Oops, wrong direction. So initially, we are the tree commission. Need was identified, and areas of concern were expanded to take on other initiatives. We are strictly advisory, and we address issues brought to us by the mayor, residents, and city council. We participate doing education as far as monthly articles in the den. One of our posts, Volcanal Mulching, went viral. It went worldwide, which was a huge surprise to us. One of the other things that we are working on now is the GRC-2. There are a whole lot of initiatives of trying to make our city more green. This is... A lot of municipalities throughout the Chicago area, there are multiple categories. This document is massive. What we've done is we have taken it and went through all the categories and looked for things that we are already doing, that individual departments were doing on their own, that we may not have known. And so we consolidated and put all those together. And now we are reviewing some of the things that maybe we're close to doing, and basically identifying law-hanging fruit and addressing those and seeing how we can, again, become a more green city. One of the other things that we do is that we take care of Langham Woods, you know, the park, the wooded area over in Langham Park. It is the only wooded area that is owned by the city. Everything else is owned by the park district or managed by the park district. So we have workdays there. We do trash pickup. We work on eliminating, trying to get rid of invasive species of plants. As with a lot of things that we've done over... All of us have had to deal with with COVID. We haven't had a cleanup in a year or two, and hopefully by next year or this coming fall, we'll be able to do so. We are also, as Tree City USA, part of that designation is to oversee all of the city's parkway trees. And so that is initially how the tree commission was formed. That was our initial duties, and then we expanded, as I mentioned earlier. So that is, you know, that's what we were doing there. We also are in the process of revising and reviewing the urban forest management plan for all of our parkway trees. One of the things that we found in reviewing that document is that it is specifically dealing with the city's trees. It isn't really a very good resource for our residents. For instance, there are things that, you know, are trees that are not recommended for the parkways, such as a black walnut. When they drop the walnuts, it isn't real good for passing cars. So it's on a do-not-plant list. However, property that's large enough, it may be a desirable plant. So we're exploring, trying to come up with tool lists and looking at things where the residents can also use this as a document and expand it from what its initial purpose was, was simply managing the urban forest. Upcoming on Saturday, April 30, and we'd love you all to attend, is our Arbor Day celebration. This year, what we did last year, too, is a pilot, and it worked really well, so we're going to try and expand that. We had the students of both of our high schools work on doing cleanup. And we had a tremendous amount of participation from both high schools. We're now expanding that and hoping that we get residents wanting to participate as well. And people will be recognized at our Arbor Day celebration in Potawatomi on the 30th. So there should be some sign-up opportunities. I believe that have been posted. We've been asked, like, what areas are you going to clean up? Well, that kind of depends upon how many volunteers we get. So once we get the number of volunteers, then we'll focus on areas, of course, law-hanging fruit, again, would be our river as well as our parks. As part of our celebration, we generally acknowledge or award a stewardship award. Our recipient last year was Ralph Bradoff for all of his years of serving as the chair of our commission. Also includes a proclamation by our mayor. And I believe this was probably one of the last duties that Ray had before his successor took over. One of the other things that we do is that we do pumpkin composting, and that is frequently the, you know, each year following Halloween, it's at the Public Works Facility. We've collected a lot of pumpkins. It diverts pumpkins from the landfill. They're used then for composting, and so that's one of our initiatives. This year, for the first year, we started a cooking oil collection right after Thanksgiving to try and keep cooking oil from being dumped into our, you know, down in the sewer and then, you know, creating problems on down the line. After American Bloom, this was a program, the Holiday Light Recycling, was a program that they had run until they disbanded. We started, picked that up this year. We want to thank the Blue Goose for being our primary distribution or drop-off point, as well as having it public works. We will work on expanding that for this coming year. The other thing that some of you may or may not have heard that we're working on is a single-use bag fee. We're looking at doing this for two reasons. Number one, diverting the number of bags that get, you know, get thrown out into the waste stream. For instance, like, waste management reports that cost nearly $15,000 per hour when the machines have to go offline for cleaning, because this thing comes, these things gum everything up, and, you know, that obviously is passed on down the line to us. So we've all heard this before, think globally, act locally. So here's what we've been working on. We've been, we formed a kind of a hybrid commissioner committee between St. Charles and Batavia. And Geneva unfortunately cannot pass any kind of a fee associated with single bags because they're not home rule. But they are looking at doing a resolution. Aurora is watching what we're doing, as well as, I think it's Hoffman Estates is watching what we're doing. So we've got some local support from various organizations. We just recently had a survey that, I just got the results Sunday. I will be actually having that forwarded to you to see that, the results of that. I will say I was surprised. Usually when you do surveys, you get all the negativity of why not to. And it was fairly overwhelming in favor of having a bag fee to reduce the amount of bags that are sent out. The other thing that I was surprised at is it was also overwhelming to accept a bag ban, which, from my perspective, is kind of unwieldy, but it was more or less to see what the temperature was of our residents to find out. When you read, when you see it, you'll see how many municipalities, you know, people responded. You know, I think there was like four from Campton Hills and some from Elgin, but overwhelming it was St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia. So there are currently municipalities within our state that are, that already have a, some sort of a bag fee, those being Evanston, the city of Chicago, city of Edwardsville, Woodstock, and Oak Park. We're going to kind of focus on, we're not going to go through all the rest of them for the interest of time. City of Oak Park, they have a 10-cent fee. The retail establishment retains five cents for administrative purposes. The balance of it then goes to the city of Oak Park. As you see down there in the bottom, they realized a significant reduction in the number of bags that were being sent out. City of Woodstock, again, another 10-cent fee. The retail establishment there in Woodstock retains three cents. It applies to retail spaces, as you can see, 5,000 square feet or greater. So, two reasons to do this that we're going, and again, this is just informational. This is, we're still working on this whole thing as far as how we're going to present this, what our final recommendations are going to be. So this is kind of a let you know what we're working on and the reasons behind it. So over the past couple of years, the state of Illinois has had a bill in Springfield to institute a bag fee. And one of the things that has been in each bill has been a grandfather clause, meaning that if a municipality has a tax in place, they get to retain the fees generated from that. If they don't, and we don't know what that grandfather date is, they don't have anything in place right now, simply because it's an election year for Springfield, so they're not going to do anything for a couple of years. But that doesn't, we don't know what that grandfather date's going to be. So that's one of the reasons why we're working toward coming up with a final recommendation for you. And we're going, Batavia, we anticipate ours and Batavia's are going to be identical. We don't want to have one municipality kind of hanging out there and potentially drive shoppers to a different municipality. So we want to do this together. Oak Park did not realize any reduction in their sales when they started this. So they didn't have, they did not see, that was a concern they had. It did not materialize. So our proposal, as it stands now, again, we're still working on this. We have more meetings coming up. Again, it would be 10, you know, 10 cent per bag, 40% retained by the retailer, 50% retained by the city, and then 10% going to King County, the Division of Environmental Water Resources. So in closing, I really like this statement from city council member Mike Turner of Woodstock. He says, "It's the best tax you'll ever have. It's an avoidable tax. All you have to do is bring your own bag, and you don't have to pay the fee." So with that, I'm going to ask for if you would have any information that you would like us to bring to you, something specific that, or some things that when we come up with our final presentation, so that we can give you the information that you desire.
Yes, and I just have a comment, a couple of comments. Well, first, thank you for coming. I think part of what I'm trying to do with our city council is bring some of the commissions here so they can educate our group on what you all are doing and the fact that you've expanded beyond tree commission. So there's a lot of work you're doing. Regarding this last part, I want the city council understanding, you know, there's not, there isn't a proposal on the table this evening.
No. No proposal exists.
But it is something that, as we continue to talk about things like we just passed a push tax, for example, and we had to get it in before October 31st, this group, along with our lobbyists and our staff, will monitor things like this to bring it to your attention, so that we don't lose out, if we decide to, on the opportunity for them to lose municipal dollars that are really actually, should be coming to us instead of the state capturing those funds. And so I just want to thank you for, you know, coming here tonight and presenting on all of the work you're doing. And we appreciate, I know there's members of the commission here, so thank you also for attending. And I open it up, I think, Steve, you have a question?
How you doing? Good. One of the questions I had, I used to be on the King County Board, and I was on the E and E Committee, and I remember seeing all this language in the state. We were trying to, you know, move it forward because we felt like it was, you know, totally a user, a user fee. But then this thing called COVID happened, and then all of a sudden, these stores were not allowing people to bring it in their reusable bags. So something I would, I think would be good, how you draft this, would be language in there for in case that were to happen again, because then that's not, then it's not a user-based fee. Then it's making someone having to pay the money.
Yeah. Edwardsville, when they passed it, they passed it and then immediately suspended implementation for that very, because they passed it in the middle of COVID. And so that would be something that, you know, obviously can be done, you know, because we all had to kind of scramble as when COVID hit. And, you know, I would anticipate that if there's not language specifically in it, that it would be something that can be, you know, suspended until, you know, a point in time. And in fact, they actually extended their suspension. You know, they put in a date, and then they extended that again because of COVID.
Thank you.
Is this for all retailers beyond grocery? I mean, how do you differ, how broad is it?
Yeah. It's fairly broad right now. We, and again, this is just kind of the highlights in the interest of time because a full presentation is like, you know, 20 minutes. And I, we didn't have that, and we're not ready for a full presentation yet. But what we're looking at is, there are exclusions, takeout food. When we have different festivals, you know, that would be, they would be exempt from that. Pharmaceuticals are exempt. Anything that you would, like, package meat in, that would, you know, contamination kind of thing would be exempt. You know, we're talking about as far as how big, you know, facility, are we at 5,000 square feet of sales floor? Are we less? Are we more? These are all things that we're working on to figure out where we're going to come out with that. But it is not just for grocery. It would be any single-use bag within our municipality.
And it's a pretty defined on, you know, like, if you go to the grocery... And it's a pretty defined on, you know, you, like if you go to the grocery store, you have pretty light, I don't want to call them flimsy, but they're, they're smaller, lighter, lightweight bags versus, you know, a retail store might have a really heavy thick bag that can be reused again. I mean, is it pretty broad or is it, is, is it going to be pretty black and white on what you said?
I think, I think there's always, there's probably always going to be gray area unfortunately because, you know, there are those that are going to argue that those flimsy bags are multi-use because you can use them for garbage bags or something like that. But, but realistically, they're designed for single use. So therefore, I think that's what we're going to focus on. If it's designed for single use, it's a single-use bag. You know, I would think, you know, that a lot of the retailers would be embracing this because right now they are having these bags come out, they're giving out for nothing.
Sure.
And so they have a cost there. So now they get money back when they, when the bags go out because they have an administration fee, because we obviously recognize that they're going to, there'll be some time involved in keeping track of it. But also if we get a, what we're talking, you know, going for is a reduction in the number of bags being used, so then that also decreased their costs, but having the same amount of sale. So in theory, you know, it should be very beneficial for our retailers in that they should have reduced costs with the same amount of sale and they're getting money back.
Thank you.
Right.
For a future meeting, presentation, just learning more about enforcement. So, you know, if something like this does passes, whether, you know, it's Woodstock or Oak Park, but just be curious to learn more, who does, you know, from a city's perspective, who's enforcing this for retailers?
Yeah, there was, there's provisions we, I, I, the ordinance that I, I kind of liked the most, if I'm not mistaken, was Woodstock's. They are very, very close. Uh, there's just some very subtle differences between them. And it is very thoroughly laid out as far as what's exempt and what is included. So, yeah, I, I think that, uh, I think that will have most of the bases covered there because there's already, and, and one of the things that, if I were to be asked by some of the retailers, especially the larger ones, you know, about this thing, you know, I'm going to say, you know, use us as guinea pigs. You can figure out your systems, which I don't think are going to be that difficult on a small scale, so that if you have any bugs, you can get it worked out before it goes statewide. Because eventually they will have to deal with it on a statewide basis. I did do a quick search and found, you know, there are other municipalities and states that are, you know, have this, I don't think there's one that's statewide yet. There's some that are countywide. There are some other municipalities in the U.S. that are doing it, and there are other states that are considering it. So it's, it's, from my perspective, it's not if, but when. And I'd really like to see the city, personally, I always thought that our city was in the forefront and leading the way versus following.
Hey Lauren, I had the opportunity to play devil's advocate with Lauren. We, we bounced back and forth at an event on this. Thank you for all your research and your, your team. I echo, as I told you before, Ryan's, you know, point about enforcement. And in the survey, I'd like to know what businesses think, with that caveat that, hey, it's going to be eventually with the state anyway, so, you know, but what would, um, like maybe is four cents enough for them? You know, what would be their opinion on implementing this? Yeah, and since we talked, I went to like two different stores and, you know, you take Meyer or Walmart, I mean, they're set up for plastic bags, you know, so it's going to take some major, you know, redoing in those stores. So I was curious what they, what their.
Yeah, and I, and I did look to see what, you know, Edwardsville, I believe, has a, a Walmart. I don't think that Oak Park does. The shopping area of Woodstock is not as large. A lot of it, that's in McHenry. But Oak Park.
Chicago has a setup.
Yeah, oh, yeah, Chicago's got obviously a lot, and they've had to deal with it and have, you know, have figured it out. So I, I, yeah, it'll be a learning curve, but I don't see this as being as mounting.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, again, echoing my colleagues' message, you know, thoughts, specifically with Rita too, with the survey. Moving forward, I'd personally be interested in a little bit more information on methodology and things like that too. I mean, you're doing random samples.
And again, this was just kind of a, just to let you know, you know, that it was, you know, in the works. We didn't want to come here with this full-blown presentation and blindside you. So that was the, uh, that was the idea of just kind of letting, giving you a heads up that we're working on this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I will say it's an honor for me to serve this great city as, as Commissioner and serving on the commission, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, omnibus vote, that.
Okay, and I believe we are removing item three A one. Okay, so removing that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote for the St. Charles City Council Agenda dated Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Move by Bancroft, second by Bezner. Any questions? Tracy, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you. There isn't any old business this evening. Under new business, we do have to call a public hearing to open a meeting for a public hearing. So at this point, I'd like to call the public hearings for the annual budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, April fourth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Tracy, please call the roll.
Here.
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 Thank you. This public hearing concerns the proposed budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. Notice of this hearing was published in the Daily Herald on Thursday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and the proposed budget draft was made available for public inspection as of that date. A presentation of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget was made by staff at the Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. That being said, I hereby convene the public hearing regarding the city's proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Tonight, we will take public comments from all interested persons concerning this matter. Tracy, have any written comments been filed with the city clerk's office or the finance department?
No.
None. Do any of our city council have comments to make this evening regarding the budget? Nope.
I do, but that's in our, not as far as the public hearing, or do you, I have a question for staff, but that's.
That's here in my script.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay, um, yeah, I have two quick questions. I can, um, I, I don't know if this was for Bill or Heather or for Peter. Going through the budget, I saw that the, um, there was no line item for the LED streetlight retrofits. Are we done with that? Are we putting a pause on it?
Yeah, that, I believe that project is still ongoing.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's called something else in here maybe?
It could be. I'd have to look up specifics, but.
Okay, okay, I, I, thank you. And, and my second question is, you know, um, as I was going through it and I kind of like familiarized myself with the old and the new, and this one was like ten pages shorter. But I, 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 what I realized was that, um, Bill, this is probably for you, that there's no budget detail, correct? The last ten pages of last year's budget had budget detail, just not necessary, or?
Are you, are you referring to the capital project fund detail or other budget detail?
Um, yeah, I think it was just capital project detail.
Capital project detail. A lot of those numbers were, um, with various engineering accounts, capital accounts. It was really confusing. It wasn't determined to be a lot of usefulness. Um, but if anyone wants to look at that, we can certainly provide that information.
Okay, good, thank you. That's what I said, that's, that's all.
Any other questions or comments? Nope. Okay, at this time, I was asked of the city staff to offer any additional comments they may have. Nope, okay. At this time, those wishing to comment from the public should step forward and state their name, address, and the party they are representing for the record.
Very briefly, Tom Anderson. In the budget is a study proposed for hiking and biking and call it that, walkability. I think the city is in great need of that, and I compliment you all for putting that in. It'll be a process to have one half the town and the other analyzed, but it'll up the safety. The chief is working on a safety program. We can have it for bicycles. So, uh, thank you for that being in the budget.
Thank you for your comments, your positive comments.
Yes.
At this time, those wishing to come, oh, wait, we got that. Okay, motion, at this point, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move by Lencioni, seconded by Petrella. Any further questions? Tracy, please call the roll.
Bala?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. That now takes us to item B, recommendation to approve an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of St. Charles for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty-two.
So, second.
Move by Bancroft, seconded by Bongard. Oh my gosh, wow, vacation.
First day.
Any questions? Tracy, please call the roll.
Bala?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Thanks, item C, chief.
I have one item this evening, recommendation to approve a resolution for the closure of Main Street for the two thousand and twenty-two Memorial Day Parade. Uh, Mr. Martin is here to answer any questions you might have. This is an annual event, first time in a couple of years because of COVID. Uh, this is, this resolution is needed for an IDOT permit. It'll take place on Monday, May thirtieth. We're going to have Main Street closed from nine forty-five till about eleven. The kickoff is at ten. And of course, it'll go from Sixth Street on the east side. It'll end on Riverside Ave and then either go to the Freedom Shrine or the Fire Department, should we have inclement weather. With that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Nope.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move by Bancroft, seconded by Petrella. Any other questions or any questions at all? Nope. Tracy, please call the roll.
Bala?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Government Operations Vice Chair Ryan Bongard, anything further?
A one, right?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the late-night permits for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Class B and C liquor licenses for the City of St. Charles.
I believe Rita, you have a.
I had a question. Chief, I had a question for you on this. Sorry, I should have brought it up, you know, our last meeting, but as I was going through it, previous years, we've got, we got a little tally of all the calls. And I know that that always came with extensive explanation from you, and it was kind of a pain. But what I saw it as, it was a great opportunity for, um, which you kind of touched on, um, at our last meeting, to, um, when you see calls or whatever, and it was a great opportunity for you to say, yeah, this is why we have relationships with these businesses. And, um, I just wanted to say, you know, and also that it's not easy. I mean, you know, this isn't a walk in the park necessarily, managing all this. But, uh, with that being said, I was wondering why we didn't get it this year, or was it just a question?
You know, I tried explaining that a couple of weeks ago, but really, I, I had a consultation with, uh, with Ms. McGuire, Mr. Peppers, and of, and of course, the mayor, and I struggle with that every year in true candor, Rita. And really, I, I know you guys trust me with my appointment and the virtue of my office and my thirty years of experience. So if I, if I see issues or trends, I bring them to the attention of the liquor commission. Uh, but with some of that data that I, that I present, whether it's calls for service or arrests or citations, some of that stuff is really hard to quantify because, um, you know, I don't want that tally mark system being implemented here where the taverns and restaurants don't call us because they're worried about action. So really, it falls back to trusting the police department, trusting my judgment. And with that, I, I bring it forward should, should action need to be taken. But with that, I would obviously take a direction if, if the committee or council feels.
No, I, just my comment to continue was that I thought it offered great kudos to you and your department. So no problem, no, you know.
This was the first year, and I did explain that, that, that the reason I didn't bring it forward was, quite frankly, it just sometimes painted a misleading picture, and it was tough to quantify.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Rita. I think the, the tally marks themselves, when total showed the relationship with the police department, and, and I think that's a terrific thing. So I've always been, you know, on the other side of this, and that I didn't think they, otherwise, they didn't really provide information, or they provided information that could be misconstrued. So I agree with not providing that as a general manner. But, but I think Rita's a hundred percent right. I think when you look at the total, it's like, it's really a kudos to your department. So we shouldn't lose that just because those tally marks aren't there for.
Yeah, and I, and I will continue to, to vow to the city council that, you know, should there be issues, I work with the mayor's office really closely along with Mr. Peppers, that if we see issues, we try to nip it in the bud. Whether it's meetings, mitigation plans, um, sometimes we, we send out letters. This past year, knock on wood, we didn't have any action that needed to be taken, even as simple as a, a threatening letter, or not a threatening letter, but a, a warning letter perhaps, or maybe a sit-down with either myself or the mayor. We've seen continual progress.
Good, good, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Haylightner. No other questions? Tracy, please call the roll.
Bala?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Government Services, that best, or anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Planning and Development, Steve Weber.
Uh, looks like we have two here that were not on the, on the list. So I would like to, uh, make a motion to approve the ordinance amending Title twelve, C one.
I'm sorry, what? You just, are you going to read the whole thing or?
You want me to read the whole thing? Okay, motion to approve an ordinance amending Title twelve, streets, sidewalks, public places, and special events. Chapter twelve dash four, general provisions, section twelve dash four dash one oh two, outdoor cafes and food carts in public places of the St. Charles Municipal Code.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Bezner. Any questions? Tracy, please call the roll.
Bala?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve resolution approving an outdoor cafe layout for the first street, east and west, public plazas for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Move by Weber, seconded by Werbal.
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate again that, um, I don't want my no vote to come across as that I'm against use by the businesses of the plaza. I, I'm okay with temporary limiting the access to the plaza, but I'm not okay with temporary removal of the plaza as a public amenity. And as well, I also see kind of a two thing, I, the removal of it as a public amenity, but also I kind of, because I've heard from them, that it gives an unfair advantage to, uh, to, for businesses that other businesses don't have access to. So that's, you know, but I understand it's a temporary situation.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, before moving forward, um, I'd like the record to reflect that I'm refusing myself from this conversation and vote due to tip, extra tip forms.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Tracy, please call the roll.
Bala?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni? Petrella?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is public comments. Anybody that would like to just say anything? Okay, additional items, uh, for me, one, um, first, we have a birthday coming up, and it's Tracy's on the thirteenth. So happy birthday, Tracy. I know you love to, you know, meet and talk. And, um, this is probably the longest meeting I've ever held, so my apologies to Peter Serz tonight because there's a Kansas state on shortly. So Bezner and Bongard, this is your problem now to cut it to eight o'clock. Anyway, um, anything from anyone else up here? Anything from staff? No? Okay. Um, anything from any other citizens? Okay, just so everyone knows in the audience, we are moving to government operations next, then government services, and then, uh, we, the city council will have a short executive session.
Your Honor, can I just, school board would kill for a forty-five minute. Just take it all in perspective, yeah.
All right, I think that is better. I need a motion to adjourn now.
So move, second.
By Lencioni, seconded by Petrella. I heard everyone's voices. Tracy, please call the roll.
Bala?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni? Petrella?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.